Do you hear me? I don't know if it's an alligator or something.
Oh, no, God, yeah.
Unbelievable.
There was a conversation, and that was the decent.
It was a decent.
So there's like no more safety in the world.
No, you're right.
And it's not like the room where, what was the other room where I was speaking? The dinner or something?
Oh, that was two weeks ago.
Yeah. He crawled into the thing. I mean, did you not want to go find the weathering door? Really?
No, I wanted to go find people who run this. You don't make it by.
I have frozen in this. Cold and wet.
I know. I know. It's like all the people who called last week, how many phone calls did everybody get to find out? When is school ending? What's the last day of school?
I said the roll call.
I know, but you break it right.
This is from the.
Right, it's slippery. I've been gone for two weeks. There we go. Okay, how's that close? Is that better? Did you all hear me before? I hope you didn't, because I don't know if I'll. All right. Roll call, please.
Okay. If you're not here, raise your hands. Sorry, I missed a couple, so I'm a little rushed. Allen?
Yeah.
Cooper? Ferguson?
Here.
Polly? Sally?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Parrot?
Here.
Omer? Kathy?
Yes.
Here.
Petrofessa?
No.
And Robinson as well.
And all of those people called and told us, I'm sorry. I mean, to them. Recognitions. How about recognition, really?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, my God.
I just got to say, you might have as well. Danbury among Connecticut's top 100 school districts for college readiness.
Yes.
And they're 169, right? But they ranked the top 100. We were 40. My numbers come out very too much. New bad, right? And they have 25% of the state. And then they select a group for their preparedness, the course, the rig of the course, the AP, SAT, and all of those standardized tests that are given, and they're access. So you can commend yourself for the work you did a number of years ago. Hopefully, it's just it's good to see that that's being recognized in high schools. That the word part of it. So that's, that's, that's great.
So where was that from?
Uh, this was actually, I got on the Danbury Patch.
Patch.
They have, uh, and it's like, it was. Uh, yeah, this study was done by the NICHE ranks the top 100 school districts. And this ranks.
The NIC.
NIC, uh, NICHE ranks. It's a national, a national clearinghouse. One, number one in the state was Westport. Uh, but we, uh, we did quite well when you look at 100. And we're, uh, ahead of a lot of schools that are way above us in the derbs. That's great news. That's the recognition. Recognize high school stuff in Danbury.
Great. Public participation.
I see.
It's crowded up here. Is there anything here that's going to just take you where you're going? Seeing none, let's go. Michael, um, David, send a call.
Okay. The Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar exhibit 16-101 through 16-104. That's recognized.
Second. Second, if I can be. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to say it's a discussion. I would like to thank Sharon Busco for 47 years of service. Where did she work?
She was at South Center most recently.
I'm sorry?
She was at South Center most recently.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to. Forty-seven years is a long time to work. Thank you. Thank you very much, Sharon. All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstentions? Moving on. Is there any board representative? Or is it just, I think, separate? That's the ring of law. Student representatives off, you two are missing. We have a presentation. John? Okay.
What's yours?
All right.
Hi. Johnny Paulson from Westside High School Academy. I'm a veteran. I used to say that. Uh, so I came tonight to present about the Weather Bloom Project at the eighth grade. Participated again this, this year. They were supposed to come in May and present the board meeting in May, but when it's a student-led project, uh, they're not, they're not totally familiar with the ins and outs of trying to schedule getting on a board meeting. And so we, in plus, I believe meetings, we had many others with other things. So now that school's out, I volunteered to come in and talk about the project. Um, I did put together a presentation. I'm not sure if I can plug into that. I have a board, but I'm not sure it's the props on or the projector on. But, um, while that's warming up, though, I just want to say that, uh, and I feel like this project is a great representative of representation of what we do at Westside. Uh, I know that a lot of thought and money is in putting it to our school. And, uh, we just want to show that, that that investment is paying off. That it's a worthwhile investment. And our kids are really, um, striving to attain the highest levels. And, uh, hopefully, you know, Dr. Sal made a comment about college readiness. Hopefully, we're, we're helping that cause along. And, um, so this project is, uh, is our capstone project, um, for the eighth grade. Uh, in the eighth grade, they, they participate in quite a few different projects. Uh, two of the major being the science fair, which we were the number one school in the state of Connecticut. In regards to middle school, we cleaned house at the science fair this year. Did extremely well. Um, but we also, we also do a purely student-led project, uh, launching weather blooms. And, um, I'm sure if it's.
So.
Yep. Sorry, my computer can be a little bit.
Is that a weather balloon shot?
Yeah. So, um, I'm not going to go into presentation. One of my, my period of time seems to freeze up, so. But, um, like I said, this year, this is our second year. We've launched weather blooms, uh, from Danbury High School. And, um, so I will share this presentation with anyone that wants. There's some videos. I know that the time is kind of limited, so, um, I'll hold off on showing the videos. Feel free to watch them there. This presentation was created by students. Um, so let me give you a little bit of a project overview. Uh, so like I said, the eighth grade participate, um, in a truly-led student, student-centered, uh, project. It's kind of our capstone. Um, we ask students to break into four different groups, and it's self-chosen by them. So we have a team that deals with the design of payloads. We have a science team that learns about, uh, um, uh, science equipment or, uh, science instruments that go on to weather blooms. They learn coding, computer coding for it. We have a weather team that works with Westcon. We have a partnership with them in which they learn about weather forecasting, weather prediction. Uh, they come up with launch protocols. And then we have a PR team, which is responsible for raising money, working on kind of some of the logistics. Uh, they work on advertising. They also work on media, um, getting publication, public publicity for the whole project. Um, and, uh, through our partnership with Westcon, kids were able to learn about weather, um, different scientific instruments and design techniques. Um, they also learned to, a very important skill of communication, to be able to communicate with not only their peers, but with people within the school, adults within the school, but people outside the school. They reached out to several different businesses, several different, uh, organizations to seek help or donations. And quite often, I would get phone calls from those organizations to make sure it's legit. But at, at all times, the people would compliment how well their students represent themselves, present, you know, and represent our school, and how clear they were in their communication of what they wanted. I like doing better than what I'm doing right now. So, um, with that being said, uh, the, the teams then work on, the teachers just act as talks. Were there to help facilitate, were there to answer questions, or help them harvest resources if needed. But really, we need it up to the students. Um, they talk to students from the past about their experience. Um, and then again, you know, so we try and launch two balloons, which we're the only third school in the state to, to do a weather balloon project. And as far as I know, we're the only one that ever does two balloons. And we've been the most successful thus far in the state of Connecticut trying to pull a project off like this. Um, so last year, we did the same project. Uh, we launched two balloons. We had one balloon reach 80,000 feet, another reach 72,000. Like I said, we're the only third school in the state of Connecticut. This year, the students decided they wanted to go bigger and better. So we got a larger balloon. Uh, we used one balloon that was the same size as last year, and then another balloon that was double the size. So when you inflate a balloon, its approximate diameter is about five feet, eight feet diameter. Um, and the smaller balloon, when it reaches its first elevation, that's where it'll finally pop because the gases it's standing is about 18 feet. The larger balloon's 30 feet. So you can imagine across the size of this room, that's, that's how large this balloon is when it finally pops. Um, and they overcame some of the challenges that they, we occurred last year. And the biggest thing that we saw was to make this more student-driven, more student-led. So we really put a lot of the communication on them, put a lot of the onus on them. Since it was our first time last year, the teachers were a lot more hands-on. And since we've had the experience, we kind of know what's going on. We kind of really took a step back and let the kids really come to us and ask questions. And that's, I think, really what we want at Westside. We really want a student-centered, student-based learning. What are the kids, what do they need? Um, and so they came up with their mission. They wanted to successfully launch a high-altitude balloon, known as a HAB, more commonly known as a weather balloon, into the stratosphere, which is also known as near space. So near space starts at around 70,000 feet, goes well above 200,000 feet, or true spaces. Something like 150 miles above the earth's surface. So we're not quite anywhere near there, but we're, you can see the curvature of the earth. Put it that way, when you're up this height, it's a pretty amazing feat. Um, and they wanted to collect more data on the atmosphere, test scientific experiments, and they just wanted different views of the earth, different views that we didn't get last year. So with that being said, um, we, like I said, we have a design team, a weather team, a science team, and a PR team. And this is all self-chosen. Kids, you know, they fill out an application. We have certain amounts of slots. They get two, they have a backup just based on one of the teams at school. We try and divide it up so the four teams have 25 kids. But one of them, my team, had 27. The PR team had 22. Science team had about 20. So they were, it wasn't totally slithery, but it was really, we tried to accommodate what the kids wanted to learn, wanted to do out of this project. And I think that's what makes this so special, is that even though, like, the PR team, they're not working on the science as much, but they are working on some great communication, sales learning. We brought, Melissa Augustine, who's in charge of the PR team, she brought in an advertising agency to work with. She has some friends in that industry that came in and worked with the students. Like I said, I brought Westcon in to work with the rest of the teams. This singer who runs the weather team, she knew very little about weather. She's our math teacher in the eighth grade. And they worked hand-in-hand. Students would come in, professors would come in. It was really cool. We, um, tested some of our reflectors in the design team. And Westcon brought in this microwave setup so we could actually test the reflectability of the, of the reflectors. And, uh, it was really cool. Like, the data was, was amazing. Some of these ideas that we've seen online and that are commonly used in weather blooms turned out not to work at all. And so, you know, the safety aspect, where people are assuming that, you know, the reflector is meant so when it's up, flying through, you know, 30, 40,000 feet, a jet airliner picking up on its radar. And it's a requirement by the FAA to have this attached. And then we found out that the most commonly-used designs are going to work. So we know, and so we were able to redesign and found a design that did work, and that was through that collaboration with Westcon. So, um, so, and the design team again, they were, they researched current payload designs. They worked with, they had a constraint of these two balloons up. Each balloon has two payloads. Last year, um, each payload was roughly three and a, three and a half pounds. So we set a constraint of two, two, 2.2 pounds, trying to cut that down. And we were pretty successful with that. Um, they had to work on the placement of electronics, making sure that they were safely, um, safely, uh, placed in the, in the payload, but also that they can operate properly. They had to learn how to rig, um, the parachute. They had to work on a cutaway system. They had to safely learn how to assemble this whole process, because when something's flying at 90,000 feet, even if it weighs two pounds, if there's no parachute attached, they can, they can fall at 30, 40 miles an hour, and that can really hurt somebody. So we, clearly, we don't want that. This, you know, Joe and I had a long discussion last year about safety. Um, and so some of our accomplishments is, again, we tested reflectors. Uh, they had to construct and test final payload designs. So we had different scenarios. We have, Dr. Labanka and I have a thing that we use, engineering called a crusher. So we can test stress loads that we, um, they had different themes with the payloads. One was a tribute to breast cancer. One was the homeless shelters, the food base here in Danbury. One was, uh, for NASA, and then one was just for our own school. So they had their own themes to it. Um, learning to safely rig, which again, was very important. And, uh, we're in the, almost there, making them waterproof. Uh, we've been lucky the past years. We haven't had enough water, because the whole, all four payloads in total are carrying about $1,500 in equipment. And there are, the odds of falling in water are actually very great. And so we've been working on, so we want to recover this equipment and reuse it every year, which we were able to do last year, and hopefully, we'll be able to do the same this year. Um, so like I said, there's some, you can see through this presentation, there's some pictures of the kids working on various aspects. You know, in my class and the design team, they get to use all sorts of tools, the professional tools, to help build these things. They get that really hands-on experience. So it's not only sitting in front of a computer, working on mini modeling, but it's actually, we're actually physically building these things and looking at different ways we can hear different types of materials. Um, the science team, uh, excuse me, the weather team, uh, you know, again, they had to learn about predicting weather, forecasting, and not just predicting weather here on the surface. The weather on the surface can be vastly different than at 40, 50, 60,000 feet. The winds are a lot different. They're shifting in different directions. Um, they had to learn how to, uh, model the launch. So there's some different computer models, but you have to know some input numbers. You have, you know, ascension rates, descension rate, first altitude, the weight to your payloads. They had to understand all of this physics to correctly model where our weather blooms were going to go. Um, and, you know, they had, so not only that, they had to create a timeline for the launch, like, when was our absolute launch date? We had to work with Dr. Labanka, because one of the launch days, they had chosen as that testing, we couldn't do it during then. So we had to find another time. And so they came up with that. They were the overseers. So if you think about a way, like, of some of the big corporations do project management, you always have one kind of project team manager, and they were kind of that managing team. They, they set up protocols. They were also responsible for tracking. The weather balloons helping us track it. So we had real-time data of knowing where it was flying to. Um, and so they, they had a huge responsibility. Um, and I feel like the kids really came out of that. They, they really applied standards that they use, not only in seventh grade, excuse me, eighth grade, but things that they learned in sixth and seventh grade. So they did this nice spiral curriculum they're applying to it. So it's, it's a really cool project, um, with regards to that. So the science team, uh, we had quite a few kids. So we use microprocessors, Arduino microprocessors. And they're basically small, kind of mini computers that you can, um, program to do a variety of things. Sorry. A variety of things, but, um, they learned how to program in C-plus language, which is actual, real, uh, computer programming language that's used by professionals. They tested their sensors, and we did a few new sensors this year. Um, and then our designs, or, excuse me, our PR team, um, they were responsible, again, for, uh, gaining money, acquiring materials. Uh, they raised about $1,200 through GoFundMe. They did T-shirts. They made another $300 from that. Uh, they did raffles. We actually had NBC from, uh, West Hartford that came out. Uh, Connecticut NBC came out and filmed us. We had the news patch. And so I think overall, the project was a huge success. Um, and where the balloons are currently, um, I haven't had the time. I've been out to see them, and I have not been able to retrieve them sitting in trees. And right on the border of Connecticut, Rhode Island, according to the modeling, we reached, we kind of met our goal. We reached between 80, 90,000 feet. We definitely exceeded last year's goal, but we had a one goal of like 105,000 feet. So, um, I hope to go out next week. I've had students emailing me all this week, and we're going to go get them. But it is about a two-hour and 20-minute drive, and whereas last year, they landed like 10 minutes from my house. It was just perfect. But so this year, they, they flew directly east from when they took off, and they traveled for about two and a half hours. And, uh, it was a great project.
So what town did they land in?
Whole Town. Whole, Whole Town?
Ballin Town?
Yeah, so it's like, it's, it's a, yeah, I guess if it's a crow flies, it's not that far. But as you're dropping, there's no real easy way to get there. So, uh, it took me from I drove out to move up to our to play there. So I've got to talk to some of the landowners, um, local fire department, and hopefully, we'll have hot trees next, next week. And we'll be able to analyze the data with Westcon and be able to use that for information next year. So, um, you know, I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I know you guys have a cool agenda, and I appreciate that we went on for the last year. And again, it's student-led project, and these kids did a fantastic job. And this is a great representation of our.
Well, this, as the board, this is great, and that, this, but the idea the board has had in our, my vision is we need to move this into the other middle schools. And we have exploration people. As we move forward, we couldn't quite fund it, but the idea is to take a project and make it common among, so they have similar experiences like that, to work with the coaches, that means for building. So that's my hope, to be able to do that at that level. And Dr. Labanka has been spearheading it for us. This kind of thing can really tie themes that are, which is just terrific. And that's been a board's challenge. How do we take what works so well at these, and try to move some of it, at least, into our other schools?
Well, I think hopefully, some of the curriculum that I've worked on with, um, Dr. Labanka and my team of teachers can be used. And I do collaborate with, like, Bernardo at Rogers Park. There's some of the teachers that I've already started collaborating with, and that they've seen come talk to me. And I've always told them that email me if you have questions. I know Sherri Pendergratz, she's also been, reached out to me about a few projects. I do an egg drop in seventh grade. Um, we do a couple of different projects in sixth grade. And I'm more than happy. I think that's the starting point.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is it is not to be happenstance, but plan.
Right.
Because that is, that's the way it is working now.
Right.
Well, our hope is to actually select and say, okay, we are going to fully decide.
Absolutely.
Make sure of that.
And I think, I think some of the challenge, too, is, 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 you know, with the teachers, as they get more comfortable with the exploration, is when they get on the board, is to make a project like this successful, as a teacher, you have to learn to take a step back, which is very, very difficult to do. But I think with the coaches and experience from other teachers and, you know, maybe using the PLC times or the PD times so that those other middle schools can collaborate with us and talk about that, I think that would be a huge step forward. I, I appreciate the challenge that it is. I face it at our own school, but it's, we really, I feel like we've made.
And the PR team that raised money, I mean, could use them.
Okay. I, I feel the same way. I feel the same way.
Children, every aspect of the project.
Right.
And thank you, Steph. Thank you very, very much. Not just for the presentation, but thank you for the work that you've done and the collaboration part. Thank you, Greg. It really did, because it sparked you off to step aside and help people, if you do. Thank you very, very, very much. Goodness be to you. Anything else you can.
I appreciate it. Have a good night, have a great summer. Thank you very much.
I remember, no trespassing.
Someone's. John? Someone told me I'm climbing the tree.
Uh, if I have to climb the tree, yes.
I just want to unfllow.
I'm actually, I have some really good tree climbs. I think I'm okay. They're, they're up there.
We're volunteering.
Yeah, I'm going to climb the tree. In a week or two. All right, moving along, because we want to get out of here.
John?
It is hell.
John?
Action, I.
Let the Board of Education approve allocations for the ECS Alliance grant in accordance with 16-105.
Second, if I can be. Do you want to hear any questions? See any questions or discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Right, B?
Um, let the Board of Education approve the 2016, 2017 building rental rates in accordance with 16-106.
Second. Second, if I can be. Any questions? Joe, you want to say something?
We have a pretty blunt discussion of rates at, at sites and facilities. Small rates, change is nothing major, about 2% or so, because of some of the additions in hourly rates. So, um, nothing major.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed? All in on, passes? C.
Yeah, the Board of Education accept the May 2016 Operating Results Analysis General Fund in accordance with 16-107.
Sir. Second by Laddes. Any questions? You want to match it up?
Just not sure. I mean, everything looks good. We're trending well on, on all, in our all areas that we see. Health insurance continues to show some increases in surplus. Right now, as they could serve a quarter, about half a million dollars, I think, as of now. We don't have June claim numbers yet, and June can be a, a pretty crazy month for claims. So right now, that's unsure, but right now, we're pulling out another year closing the black. We're looking at a bunch of initiatives and items that we're trying to take off during the year. Some creative materials, those sorts of things, on all those.
So at the end of the year, whatever, the minute, whatever we have expended, we'll go to our healthcare.
Correct. Any, any leftover surplus will be, will be transferred to Siden Health Insurance Reserve Money. So I had a conversation with Dave Stenler about it, actually, it's earlier this morning.
Remind us of what we have in there now?
Right now, there's $5.7 million in the fund. In order for the board to use all the fully reserved, it has to be about 6.7 million, or about a million dollars away from being fully reserved.
Good job.
That is.
Any other any discussion, guys? Any questions, Joe? Nope. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? All right, seeing none, go.
Let the Board of Education accept the May 2016 Operating Results Analysis Grant Projects in accordance with 16-108.
Second.
Second by Michael? All right, stay as, no discussion. And all in favor?
Aye.
How about the poster statement? Passes?
Uh, let the Board of Education approve the teacher evaluation plan in accordance with 16-109.
Sir. Second by Laddes. Any questions, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Thank you. We'll submit that to the state.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to sign the amendment, the amended agreement in the summer lunch program agreement with SDEXO in accordance with 16-110.
Sir. Second by Laddes. Any questions? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Objection, subventions? No? Passes. Chief.
Let the Board of Education approve the revisions to the conduct codes as discussed at the last meeting.
Second.
Second by Michael? Any question, any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Objection, subsensions, seeing none, passed. All righty.
Thank you. Uh, those of you that, um, came to graduation, thank you. It was a great ceremony. We had about 557 students graduate in an hour and 35 minutes, 40 minutes. I thought the kids were phenomenal again this year, they're respectful of the speakers, they're respectful of themselves. Um, the celebratory at the end was appropriate, just, it's just phenomenal to see the kids behave so well at graduation. It just, and as many kids. We, the only thing happened this year, we did have a problem with some of the parking, we were looking at some of the middle school, two of the women's base staff. High school parking, uh I got down at the bottom of that hill. Where is that? Yeah, at five, at four thirty and we were supposed to be marching five, I was dressed in, so I was walking down there. Took a half hour to go, what is it, half a mile? But what they did, they closed the parking lots and it stopped everybody doing U-turns and pushing people back. I don't know how to get around that, but that's what happened, so they started parking in the mornings. Shut up, I know that resulted in tickets, but they let me in, obviously, but there was a problem with that, so as we grow to nine hundred kids, I'm worried.
I did go to the graduation, five, 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 but the middle school graduation, just somehow we have to look at how we schedule that. Because once we finished the, I went to the twelve thirty and once we finished to come out, they were just through ranks. We know parents won't take pictures of the children, it's proud they were in, and you couldn't move, you just got in the hallway as the ones were just breathing. And then the people that was coming in for the two thirty, they couldn't get in because the people that was coming out weren't moving. And they, they, there was nowhere for people, they parked, they had parked all the way down to, I think it's going to here and walk up. Because the people weren't moving in order for them to get in, so I, you know, parents, this is just my thinking. Maybe twelve thirty at four thirty and maybe do the third one on another day and make it convenient and put it easier so parents can understand. You know, because the kids got, their teacher already told the kids that they need to be there at a certain time and they're gonna be on time. So they have one to twelve thirty, I think the middle school, the west side was at two thirty and then Broadview was at four thirty. So it, it, we just.
They're gonna review the times and all of that, we talked about, you know, some of those schools actually start at eleven o'clock, moving as, moving ups their own. And maybe the last one starting at seven, so they don't want to get that time if it's possible. They do need to put about an hour and a half between getting people out, pictures of people in, so they need people to kind of.
Maybe have someone directing people that's coming out there at that first grade waiting, you know, we don't wanna rush people, but you need to get out so that all the people.
Right, and it has to be an intercept.
There was, there was a few people that were discussing it, Westside's the smallest group and, and that was one of the things that a few of the parents were saying. They were in and out so fast that they might be best served to be the first group. You know, have them get in, get out and maybe to Gladys's point, a broader time in between, but that's what happened. And I, I went there for Westside's and everybody was still there, there was nowhere to park and like that, but the Westside one went really quick. Of course, Westside only had a hundred kids at this time, but even next year it'll only be two hundred.
That's, when they put it in the middle, that's why they thought they would have less of a comedy, but they need to review that whole thing. Start early, go late and give them about an hour, ninety minutes after, so people can take photos, move on and then people come, we gotta do that.
But also, we all, also, we, we, parents may not be working and a lot of parents take off or, you know, come to the graduation. So when we set in the time, you know, a lot of parents just can't take off. In my olden days, I had sick time, I had first one time and people may, you don't have that kind of time when you work, you just lose a day. So we need to be constant, wanting to go around and set the time and then eleven o'clock or ten o'clock, because that's when parents can get their kids.
We also need to, to realize it takes longer, it's not everybody's temporary husband, right?
Yeah, they still blew over three nights and got those issues, people weren't showing up, but I think they'll review that day too, but it needs to be improved. The other thing is A-side good, moving up, graduation ceremony as well, they changed it, it was at the, at the center, at the. Student Center, it's about eighty down, forty-five minutes, I encourage you next year to come, I think you'll really enjoy it. They eliminated the day program.
They did.
Yes, and they have just a night program and um the speakers have been, they've minimized that, it was really nice for them, so next year.
And I apologize to everybody for not being at anything, um, what was that, for you?
Okay, so more projects you wanna mention?
I think the only noteworthy one, obviously, the high school project, which is recently updated, the sites and facilities, the, which had first construction being up there today with the roof beginning and oil tank and all those other sorts of things. Shelter out portables, which we briefed the sites committee on, hired an architect, fired an associate, there are going to be basic design drawings for that, we're going to book this date on July twelfth for funding. And that's only long, it's a, it's a two bigger piece. High school, the groundbreaking, I believe, they're talking about, you know, foundation work, I know it's beginning this, you know, late summer, maybe fall, so that's.
And we have, there's a handout that has everything.
Yeah, I left everyone.
Uh, for the board, I, someone asked a month ago, we've been checking in to the French trip that was canceled.
Yes.
So there's been some problems and um. Mr. Gladys. I wrote, this is a letter I wrote the other day, to the chairman, expressing my displeasure and, and Mr. Ashford, I'm returning the money to students at the time of the case. Thanks, thank you. You can see right there, I sent it to the commissioner today, she wrote back and said that she was gonna check with her legal department. On the school systems, they called me because they, they had some problem. The gentleman did write me back today, right, Kim, and he said basically, we should understand we're having problems with insurance. Well, no, it's your responsibility, they shouldn't have to wait so long for their money. Some parents are upset, there's anything the board can do, really, so if parents call you, sometimes it'll be me or Dan, we'll start to send a letter home. This is just happening now, they're all calling a teacher that did the program. We'll get a letter out to him, tell him that we've written the commissioner, I wrote the, our CEO for CAPS telling him to tell all of the districts the problem they're having. This, clearly, this guy is, remember he presented himself yet, he, everything was okay, everything was gonna work as well? They did, and it hasn't. He's the one that also advises that maybe we can run our programs and you wouldn't sanction that in both those schools, it wasn't that way exactly. So I'm really concerned, they should get their money back, he's fighting the insurance companies. Point is, even if the insurance, right now the insurance companies monitor it maybe seventy-five percent of it and he's trying to get the other twenty-five percent. Well, it doesn't matter, he would have made a good thirty-two percent, because the kids should get a hundred percent back, they, they canceled the trip, so that's what's going on. So anyway, I called you, this letter did go out and the commissioner responded back and we see we'll get some pressure on. I didn't want you to. The other, the other thing is, we have, there's a residency program, there's an organization that sponsors some of the studies that we've been doing. And um we have Stephanie Furman, the principal of Haystown, who's admitted into the residential school leadership program. It's on a long term evening, it's during the summer, but I hear they are turning on principals and Connecticut has been at the front, uh, front of the pack in moving down this venue in terms of working as school leaders. There was an application process, pretty exciting, she was an interview process, she was selected to be one, so it's pretty, uh, it's, it's pretty good for us. And also there'd be a lot of learning she can bring back to the other principals, which I think is terrific. And that's, um, she's Stephanie Furman over at Haystown, she's going into her third year. You know, there's a person we're looking at, she came to us as a coach from Darien, or Darien, who had the acumen to leadership and really worked out to be a principal. So that's, that's, uh, really pleased to know that. Uh, I have nothing else to add, I don't know if this, let me just ask Mr. Gladys.
Just have, just a quick aside, the, Sal, I got the pronouns of the Alliance District grant funding across the state. Of the thirty Alliance districts, only three received increases, Danbury being the largest and Hartford taking a cut of over a million dollars. So in a sense, completely did well to shore. Unfortunately, those districts lose no fund.
It has a lot to do with this new team that you've all put together, that's progressive and working with people that supposedly represents service and making, and getting them to work.
Stanford, Hannigan and Danbury was a three increases.
Speaking of that, if you wanna mention anything about, when I got the, I saw it's.
Yes, oh, I should mention my financials, we are gonna, on the promise of fifty thousand dollars, I had to close out before I'd start, that the board did discuss fifty thousand dollars. I talked to Mr. Malone already, he's gonna need voices for the fifth, we'll close out at end year and close.
And he does understand that this, that's the end of it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, he did, he did. He indicated going to the city, correct?
Yeah, he did, he did.
So I wanted the board to know the case of rest.
Okay, so we can stop that conversation here, that's good, thank you, Kathy, did you?
No, I just had a question about the lifetime excursion.
Yeah, it's, I'm not getting by me, are you told?
Well, I didn't know, you know.
No, there isn't any right now, right? But I'm saying if you, that's why I sent it to CAPS and I sent it to the commissioner, I just don't know.
This all started because we could go out here, call for region five, which is Amity, Woodbridge, and they had, well, we, we gave her a similar trip and we were really, Nelson reached out to the teacher and found out that some kids have received money. We were in the same position, they have to draw money as well. I don't know how many districts use that, that is.
That's why I got to contact the commissioner, they're gonna check it out, and CAPS, they're gonna check out, check it out.
Does anyone else have any questions on Sal's?
Anybody, Bill, or?
Anybody else wanna talk?
Kim.
Um, Kim, you know, you're all grand states. Right next, next is, uh, next is discussion information, oh. I don't have a report because they think that you're listening in the bars, I haven't been doing too much stuff. I do, I did apologize to y'all, I also thank you, I hope you all, thank you very much for the lovely flowers. And you're still going, you're still on the kitchen table. And I've always wondered, this is an assignment, women will appreciate this, that smiling face thing, it's always like, sort of cute, you know, you're like, what would you find in that? Lady comes through on the kitchen door, because I didn't, I had to call you in because I think I couldn't get up at that great time to answer the door. She closes the kitchen door, I sit at the desk and I turn around, here's this yellow mug with this big smile on it and that's what was in the flowers were in. And it just made me smile and, and I'm stood out enough, Sam's saying this truthfully, I'm said every time I walk in the kitchen, because the roses are dead, but everything else is still alive. And I look in that stupid mug, it's saying, there are the flowers in it, I just smile, you can't, you just can't help it, it's just smile. And through those black eyes, it just makes you smile, that's it, maybe very, it did, powerful. And I know, but to me, proud of that graduation, look like my slide, thank you for, that's my favorite time either on this day. Um, and that's all I have to say, quiet. All right, all this is done, and does anybody have a report? Kathy, wanna? We talked about. All right, so anybody else, Richard, anybody wanna talk? No, Kathy?
I had, yeah, I just wanted to, I went on the, I went, went to Mr. Newhouse and went to the teachers, I went to Westside and volunteered. They made, engineered cars out of food, which was very cool. So they had a blast and that was fun, so I took the day off and then I helped out with the, my wife and I with the eighth grade camps. So we volunteered for that and I just wanted to appreciate Ethan Allen lent us a bunch of tables, so I ran over and picked them up and they were very nice to that and I dropped them off that night. And so I just wanted to appreciate them, the people who volunteered, it was, it turned out to be a really fun night, the kids out of class, they get us all right up until long after the, the DJ was there. Was one of the parents of one of the students and they volunteered that and that was just a really passionate, it was very nice.
Those are the, and plus the best things to do, and it's how you find out exactly what you're doing and, and how it works. It's nice when people come and do presentations and they sit here, but when actually standing in the school and watching this do it, there's no description. It makes every hour that you spend in this room or home doing research or things like that worthwhile because, because of those spaces that you just saw. And those teachers that are doing those things, it makes it all work fun. So it's not just going to the community and the skies, it's actually getting out, keep in. And Richard, yes, I'm sorry.
Rich, can you use?
Use, use the mic.
Um, the community relations committee with regard to the ECS funding, um, the, uh, that's got Charlie Burges. The, the Katie Roy reached out to me the other day, said she wanted to meet with me to again follow up on, on some more of the ECS funding. And the presentation that she had, had given to, to us a couple of months ago, some of it for sometime in the next couple of weeks. Then I'm gonna put together a meeting with the group that came to the community relations committee outside, this is one of the board members, if you're available, sometime in the next five or six weeks, um, to sort of have a brainstorm session to kick off our plan of attack for how we're going to tackle this particular project. And, uh, in, in October, I hope to have joining us, not only some board members available, some of the community members that express interest. The person in charge of school governance council, they have, Henry Hyde, is excited to do it, Henry is on board, is feeling that they have, part of the BTO meeting is assigned to join us. And a couple legislators who took part in the first meeting, we're gonna reach out to, see if they, they will attend the second meeting. So we're trying to go through implementation schedule, and that's my ideas with Dr. Sowers and bullet points that we want to handle. So we're gonna try to have a meeting that gives us some sort of organization and a pro forma is to paddle about and plan this particular project. So come October, November, we are at least having a meeting.
Thank you, so everyone else would like to say anything? You told my lady, that is your question.
Um, just briefly, we completed the super super regular and um, I wanna thank everyone for participating and telling the minutes. I think, um, I'm hoping that sometime this afternoon, that we can get together just as a group to discuss the new evaluation form that we're talking about. Look at the old one that we used and the new one that Kate sent down and it would just be a meeting just to look at the form, that's all, okay? And we'll do that sometime this afternoon.
Thank you, thank you, anybody else, nobody?
Board retreat, all right.
Yes, well, wherever, as soon as we start again, right, if we're having, um.
They would care to size for a.
Yes, we are, two weeks in a little bit, that's where.
I reserved the same place that the administrators went on there and retreat today, no, there wasn't. See if the GPS can get there.
Is there any chance it might have heater air conditioning at that point?
I just wonder.
Along those lines, we did contact, I was just, I contacted a gentleman, his name, I'm sorry, had, had worked with the board in the past, it's out of Hartford, there's an organization there.
Leadership.
Carol, yes.
Yeah, Ted Carroll.
Ted Carroll, and he's available and, um, in a form.
And he's gonna come and, and they're gonna have a workshop, it'll be good, like kind of had, best one we ever had was in, we had it at the church, that's not the church.
There's no one in the church, I'm the nurse, it's, it's best.
It was the best and this one will rival that, I swear to God, it will not be the same old same, I promise.
Yeah, swear, it's good.
I swear, God, it's gonna be different, thank you. That's it, guys.
Instead of funding back so much money, we're sitting, just take out a little bit, let's have a Black Angus.
Okay, Richard.
Take a river, that's all.
Let's take a, that's true. All right, it's, one of you recorded that, right? All right, moving on, executive session, I'm looking for a motion to enter into executive session, at which time I'm gonna ask everyone with the exception of Dr. Sow and to leave the room. And members of the Board of Education.
Just stay, just stay a second for the first part, just two things on. Right?
I'll make them up.
Seconded. She needs to be in there for the.